Please rise for the plan. Please rise. My delighted.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Irby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Quorme, Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
For the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of June 13th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. June 13th, 2017, Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we move to Communications.
Mr. Chairman, there are no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening. We will move to other communications. Other communications, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number three, and that will be the order.
Item number three. Item number four. Receive and file, please. Receive and file, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We don't need to vote on the just filing.
No.
Next item.
Item number five, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the change of owner be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I go back to item number four, please, and change that to hold on the order of business?
We'll accept that unless there's an objection. Item number four will be held on the order of business.
Item number six, Seventh District.
Receive and file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number seven, Third District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number eight, Seventh District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number nine, Third District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 10, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 11, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Item number 12, Second, Fourth, and Sixth Districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 13, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the change of owner be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 14, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and the change of owner be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 15, First District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 18.
So ordered, and these will be, these four items will refer to the Justice and Health Committee.
Item number 19, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 26, District.
Receive, file, and refer back to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation, please.
So ordered. Please read the add-ons.
Item number one, First District.
Please hold on the order of business.
I'm sorry, those are First District items.
Oh, it's the First District.
These are add-ons.
Oh, here we go, again.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number three.
So ordered. Report to the county executive. No special committee report. We'll proceed with public forum.
We have five speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
When your call, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. First speaker.
First speaker this evening is Lynn LeBeau.
Good evening, County Council. This past week, I wasn't able to attend the county council meeting, but I was able to view it from the council website. I found it very interesting that Mr. McManus spoke about having a small company that distributed salt. When the speaker before him made the statement that Snow Pearl was huge, one of the largest distributors in the St. Louis area. In fact, the gentleman stated that the, stated that there would be equipment running, running the streets at 2:00 a.m. and 3:00 a.m. in the morning. Mr. McManus also stated that during last year's ice storm, there were only 60 vehicles that attended their site. There was no mention of these details on the Planning Commission's report. Mr. McManus also stated that he did submit a business plan and a site plan, and that I was unaware of how things worked in the county. I received my information concerning each of those plans from Gail Choate in the Department of Planning. Gail did provide a site plan that didn't show any salt storage. I was told by Ms. Choate in an email that no business plan was submitted. Since Rob McManus contends he submitted a business plan, Ms. Choate must have not received it, or else Ms. Choate was not being honest with me when I requested this information. I really don't want to make this about he said, she said. I want the subject matters to stay focused on what is good zoning for District Six. Now that more facts are now being disclosed about the intended use of this property, the residents should be notified and have the opportunity to voice their opinions at a new Planning Commission hearing. I'll conclude by commenting on Angie McManus's statement about what a great neighbor they were to the donut shop. What she didn't mention, however, was their relationship to those neighbors off Green Park Road before their trucking company, known as McManus Logistics, claimed bankruptcy in 2013. The story started off the same. "Hi, I'm Rob McManus. I can't wait to be great neighbors." But then construction equipment piled up, and more piled up, and more piled up, while the noise from the diesel engines and pollution never stopped. In fact, out of desperation, the neighbors had to start a signature petition campaign to try to remove this business. They were not sorry to see that business go. I don't think Rob McManus should be lecturing others about telling the truth. He really should confront his own issues as they relate to the business choices that he does make. I'm grateful others have come forward to bring forth the truth, so that the Planning Commission can see what Mr. McManus left out.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill Sloan.
Good evening, Council. My name is Bill Sloan. I work for the Rockwood School District, and my position is Director of Purchasing and Transportation. As many of you know, this is the first year Rockwood has actually ran their own buses, so it's been a very successful operation for us. But one of the things we really thrive on in Rockwood is the safety of our students, and we are concerned about some of the bridges in the Eureka area. We know the council has talked about this previously, and Eureka's, you know, had to deal with a lot of flooding over the last two years especially, and it's a, really a thriving community, growing, growing by leaps and bounds with some very large developments in the area. But we have roads throughout the district, and it's primarily bridges that are around the railroad tracks that are really an issue for us. And not only in some of the areas that the council's talked about, and back on Lewis Road, Allen Road, and those areas, but there's other bridges as well that are probably to the point that the population just, you know, has exceeded its capacity on some of these bridges. But we just wanted to bring the concern to the council, that we feel that any action can be taken for the bridges that we know are very, very unsafe or deteriorating extremely, that, you know, there ought to be some action to take to fix those bridges up. The areas that we've talked about, back in the Lewis Road area, we have a lot of activity with our students. I found out earlier this evening that most of our golf teams for the high schools, the four high schools that we use, we have in our district, use those golf courses, and in fact, some of the other districts as well. Parkway is an example of one of those. So we have a lot of traffic back in those areas, and we'd really like for the council to make sure they take a very hard look at getting some work done on those bridges. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mike Kamen.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Mike Kamen. I'm with Rockwood Transportation. I'm the Operations Director. As Bill alluded, that we just completed our first year of in-house transportation. Our main concern of transporting students, we transport over 13,000 students a day to and from school, is their safety. Oftentimes, being in the operations, being on the, on the ground roots of everything, I receive calls from parents throughout the district, and letting us know that our big buses that have a gross vehicle weight of 29,000 pounds are traveling over these old bridges, and they ask, "Is that safe?" I have to then make calls and follow up and say, "What is the, what is the rating of this bridge or that bridge?" And it's, sometimes I, I don't feel all that confident in the answers I get. They, they say, "We're okay," but I go out and I look at the bridges as well. My drivers are very experienced in the area. They've been driving the roads for years. They're very conscious. Another thing about the bridges, as Bill stated, they've kind of like outlived their use, is you can't drive two vehicles over bridges at the same time. So a lot of times, there's incidents where a bus and a car, or a tractor or something, because it is highly rural, are trying to approach the bridge at the same time, and there's issues there. That's another problem that's presented, that they are narrow bridges as well. I just, I just think that seeing it myself and being with the drivers on the roads, having the field calls from parents in the district, I think that their time has come. I think that the best thing to do would be to take care of the structures and make them safe for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chairman. Excuse me. Can you tell us how many school buses ride in that area around Lewis Road and Allen?
The Lewis Road has one, actually, just one bus that goes up. Rockwood is broken up into three tiers. We do middle school, then we do high school, then we do elementary. The Allen Road Bridge has, all three tiers are serviced by one, three buses run it. So two middle schools, two high schools, two elementaries. That has the most kiddos on it, the Allen Road does. The way I look at it, just because I know that all the kids that we, that we, that we transport are the most precious cargo that there is, even if there's just one child, even if it's just my bus driver on the, on the bus, and there's a problem that, that we could have avoided, I think we owe it to ourselves. We should do that. We really should.
So you're saying six buses?
Six buses on the Allen, and, and one bus goes up to Lewis.
Every day?
Every day.
Five days a week?
Five days a week. Yes, correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Clinton McBride.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Clinton McBride, and I'm the Government Affairs Director for Labor's Local 110, represent a little over 3,000 members. And I would like to go on record today for the union as being in support of the Lewis and Allen Road Bridges, Board Bill 130. I do not purport to know exactly how these projects have gotten to the point they're at, but I do know it is a responsibility of this council to ensure the safety and well-being of St. Louis countyans. To do that, we must put policy before politics. These bridges were built in 1930. I can tell you, bridges are not designed to last for 87 years. It is time for this council to do what is right and approve these projects. Those families crossing those bridges on a daily basis are being put at a real safety risk. To those families crossing those bridges, they mean everything. I know to a lot of people that are crossing them, they don't mean a lot, but to those families that are crossing these on a daily basis, that means everything. You know, it was brought to my attention today during the Special Committee on Capital Improvements that at least one of these two bridges is having to be inspected on a weekly basis. I wasn't aware of that before, but a weekly basis, 52 times a year, those inspections, that adds up. How long are we going to continue to kick the can down the road and not invest in the projects that need the investment, and have these small fixes that end up being, having a larger price tag at the end of the day? You know, for these reasons, in addition to numerous other reasons, and actually, I will address one other thing. I know that there's been a lot of contention that these projects are being, you know, fast-tracked by the county executive, and I think it's very important to be very clear that these projects were on the books before the county executive we currently have was the county executive.
The bridges are crumbling to the ground. It sounds like a real fast track, doesn't it?
During the Committee on, Special Committee on Capital Improvements today, there was a comment made that maybe we should just not have the kids, you know, drive, ride on the bus across the bridge, but we should have them walk across the bridge. And I contend for any of you to go out to that bridge and see if you yourselves would walk across that bridge, because I'm guessing the answer to that is probably no. There's no shoulders. There's no space. It's already a one-lane bridge. So anyway, for these reasons, in addition to numerous other reasons, laborers are in favor of keeping the public safe and proceeding with the bridge projects and any other projects that's ready, any other project that is ready to move forward and keeps St. Louis countyans safe. Thank you, and with that, I'd be happy to yield to any questions. Thank you.
Final speaker this evening is Greg Brown.
Good evening. I'm Greg Brown, the Fire Chief of the Eureka Fire Protection District. I'm here again to, to ask your help on the issue of public safety with the Allen Road and the Lewis Road Bridges. We're to the point now with the status of those bridges that I've ordered our people to only cross those bridges in the event of the emergency, and that's, that's at a risk to our people. But also, the people who live back there, their only access to their homes, to their businesses, or anybody visiting that area is those bridges, other than if you want to take a boat or a helicopter. There's no other way around, period. If we have to provide service to those folks, we have to cross those bridges, whether it's somebody who is having a heart attack, or there's a fire back there. We need those bridges to be replaced. I'm asking you to, to go ahead and move forward with this project, because it is a dire public safety concern. One of those, or both of those bridges actually cross over the railroad, and not three or four years ago, I stood on the Lewis Road Bridge as there was a train that had derailed right underneath that bridge. That train was carrying grain, but if that train was carrying hazardous materials, which run through there all the time, and if something happened to that bridge, and we couldn't get that bridge, or get the train stopped before that train got to where that bridge, a piece of it fell off, and they are crumbling. I mean, they're, they're literally sandwiched together with plate steel and rods thrown, trying to hold it together. It's falling apart. We need your help. So again, I please ask you to consider to move forward with these two projects to get these bridges fixed. Thank you.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Introduction, Bill.
Bill number 157, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, an ordinance declaring the public necessity of and providing for the establishing of a public road designated as the Cleet Station Road, lying entirely within the city of Webster Groves, directing the acquisition of real property therefor, and authorizing the county executive to execute contracts, agreements, and related documents, AR 1685. Bill number 158, introduced by Councilmembers Wassinger and Irby, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $100,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Convention and Recreation Trust Fund for promotion increasing tourism as "At the Magic House," and authorizing execution of a related contract. Bill number 159, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance of reading ordinance 2469 as amended by repealing Section 3 and enacting in lieu thereof a new Section 3 pertaining to PC 10-01 Costco wholesale. Bill number 160, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger, an ordinance providing for the vacation of a portion of excess right-of-way of Old Carmen Road, petitioner Veronica Page on behalf of the Parkway School District. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection.
Bill number 121, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Please hold Bill number 121.
Bill number 121, so.
Bill number 130, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill number 130.
Second.
So we've had some conversation today about this, these bridges, and we have what I see as unanimous support on the county council to move forward with the Allen Road Bridge, and to put it on the timeline, or keep it on the timeline of repair, which is at least two years away, or nearly two years away. So the question is, how do we manage the Lewis Road Bridge? What we heard in committee today is that we are authorizing the county to purchase the right-of-way to build this bridge, and we discussed ways for the property owner who will benefit from the Lewis Road Bridge to participate in the cost of construction. And one of those questions was, should the property owner participate in a CID, or TDD, or even donate the right-of-way to build the bridge that they would benefit from, rather than having the county pay for that? So with that question in mind, and we would like to help solve this problem, we do understand the bridges are in need of repair. How would you suggest that we proceed with this? We have two options. We could divide the question and unanimously pass support for the Allen Road Bridge, which I think is there, and hold on the Lewis Road piece until we can ask Mr. Roberts what his participation would be. I guess I would ask you what you think about that idea.
So what you're proposing is that we pass the Allen Road Bridge tonight?
Yes.
And, and hold the other one until we can work out a, some communication with Mr. Roberts? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think that, you know, $2.5 million is a lot to give to a bridge that benefits one property owner, but we also recognize that the bridge is in need of repair, and we would like to have the county participate in that repair.
The bridge does not benefit one county taxpayer. The bridge benefits the entire county, and the bridge services a business as well as a home.
How would you like to?
And the roads, and the public roads that travel thereby. So I'm going to clarify that for the record, because that's just a crock.
How would you like to proceed, Mr. Harder? Would you like to pass the bridge that we all agree on, or would you? Because I'm concerned about tying these two together and then waiting for communication from the other property owner with, with Lewis Road.
So tonight, you're saying that we would vote to final on, on Allen?
So the motion to divide the question?
You can't. There's a bill here up for, for perfection. The bill can't be divided.
The motion to divide the question is always in order if it can be naturally divided without debate or vote. That's Roberts' rules, and that backs up our rules if our rules are silent on it.
I'm suggesting that the bill is up for perfection.
I understand that, but the.
Has to be perfected.
But the motion to divide the question is always in order.
Okay.
I mean, there are many, many ways to bring this issue forward. We could do it with a sub. We could do it in many ways, but the slickest and simplest way to move this forward quickly is to get Allen Road Bridge done. There's a lot of anxiety about it. It's something we all agree on, so let's say move it along.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I would suggest that we perfect the bill that's currently in place, reach out to Mr. Roberts, and see if he would entertain a donation or any other form of contribution in the construction of the bridge, and we can address the dividing the bridges next week if, if that becomes necessary. I don't know how Councilman Harder feels about that, but.
Well, that's one vehicle to move the issue along. The problem is that it delays the, if we can't reach Mr. Roberts or get a commitment from him next week that satisfies four members of the council to move the whole thing along, then we've delayed the Allen Road Bridge, which we all agree on needs to be done. And, you know, this is, this is something we've struggled with for a while, and we've had a lot of conversation between a lot of people, including council members, and, and, you know, what I don't want to see is see that Allen Bridge, Bridge be held up while we try and answer questions about the Lewis Road Bridge. And maybe the questions come back in a week, and if they don't, then we're, we've got a, we've got a, we can't move the Allen Road Bridge.
I ask for legal counsel how that would work.
Mr. Chair, could I?
Sure.
Just wait. From a record-keeping perspective, it's really impossible for the clerk's office to show part of a bill as having been perfected and part of it as not having been perfected. There's really no mechanism by which we can divide up the bill into pieces, so I, you know, I would recommend that that not be how the council addressed this, just because there really is no, no avenue for us to, to show that in the record or keep that in the record, because a substitute bill would have to deal with that.
Well, we don't want to, you know, it's, it's an editorial change to the title, which is not binding anyway. The bill is very easily divided where the sections divide. But, you know, I'm happy to move this along however we like, and I don't want to lose time, because I understand everybody's sensitive to that. But we have a unanimous agreement on, what appears to be unanimous agreement on Allen Road Bridge, and a request, instead of paying a property owner for right-of-way to build a bridge to that property, that we ask that person to participate, which I think would be a reasonable question to ask. And we can move this forward to third read, but there will be a lot of people upset if we don't have an answer, and there's not the votes to move both of these along. And that's what I'm trying to avoid, is a misunderstanding about what moving this bill along means.
What about, what about perfecting this bill as written, and then we substitute next week with these changes?
Well, the substitution will delay it two weeks, because we can't final approve something.
But then we can, we can work with the substitute bill and move it along, if it's reworked. I don't think we have to give it another two weeks after we produce the sub.
You can sub on final.
You, you can if you have unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent.
If everybody likes that, we would get unanimous consent.
So we would sub out just the Allen Ridge, Allen Bridge bill?
We could.
For the whole bill?
And then work on the other, that Lewis Road is another sub.
Okay, I would accept that. I would go along with that, but I would also recommend that you go ahead and file the Lewis Road Bridge next week as a separate item, so it moves along the process, and is, in case the, in the case we have to sub it out next week, at least you have the Lewis Road build moving along separately. Do you understand what I'm talking about?
Is that in agreement with Mr. Crane?
Well, I think that final suggestion is, is the better, better one, because if we do a sub bill for this bill next week, and pass it with unanimity, that would have substituted the bill, so you want to re-oppose the Lewis Road Bill.
And so we would sub it out with only the Allen Road bill language. We could approve it by unanimous consent, as long as everyone's going to be here next week. We need all seven members here next week to do this, right? And let's go ahead and file the Lewis Road Bridge to keep it moving along, so we don't lose time on that, and we don't hold up the one bridge that we all agree needs to be fixed.
Is everyone going to be here next week?
I have questions. I'm not clear as to why we can't have a motion to divide the question, and then your books could reflect that the motion was filed, and then the question was divided.
Well, if my, may, Mr. Chair, we would have to have a motion that told us, directed us which language was being struck, I think, from the bill itself. We, we don't have the discretion to, to go through the bill and decide which language to strike and which language to leave in, in a final version.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just move along with perfection.
Hold on just a second. Did you, did you have your question answered? Just one second.
When you, when you make the motion to divide the question, you vote to say yes or no, we're going to divide the question. The actual bill language is, is drafted later.
That may be true. That may be true in a bicameral legislative body.
It's, it's certainly in order, even though it's never been done before. If it, if there's another way to do it that everyone is more comfortable with, I have no problem proceeding with another way as long as we accomplish the same goal.
I would like to move ahead with what we discussed, that we perfect this and we work on a substitute bill for next week.
Mr. Trakus.
Mr. Chair, I'm fine doing what Mr. Harder has suggested on the basis that Mr. Harder is effectively guaranteeing the council that he will in fact introduce a substitute bill splitting out the Lewis Road project next week before any final vote is taken on this bill.
I will guarantee that.
Yeah, because you're, it's your bill. So if we don't sub it out with Allen Road, then we don't have a bill.
I will work on that substitute tomorrow.
And then I would recommend going ahead and filing the Lewis Road bill so we can move it along the process while we're communicating with Mr. Roberts if he's unavailable between now and next week.
Now, I wouldn't have to throw anything in this, but the whole purpose of these two bridges was to save the county some money. So somehow, if we split these bills sometime, somewhere in the future, it needs to come back together so that we can bid these two bridges out.
Well, I think the county has the flexibility to put things together for bid if they choose to do so. I'm not sure that the argument about saving money by putting them together is compelling, but I understand that it's there and it should be considered.
There's also federal money involved in both bridges.
Correct.
So keep that in mind as well.
Correct. So do I need to make a motion?
Your motion's in order and it's still on the floor. And I think that I'm okay voting on it as long as everybody understands what we're voting on and what we're agreeing to. I think that's important.
I have a question. You said the federal money is involved, is that a guarantee? Because at first I heard that there was a, it was kind of iffy. We weren't sure.
There's no ifiness, there's, there's federal funds that are available, and I think if I have it correct, is-
Is Dan here?
Yeah, Dan's here. Dan, Dan, can you talk about the federal money that's involved?
Dan, why don't you come on up here and use the microphones just for the record? I know this is a little, not the way we usually do things, but we need to get a ride. Mr. County Executive?
I had raised the issue of federal money and- There is federal money on both projects. Can you explain that? We seek from East West Gateway federal reimbursement at $750,000 on both proj, both bridges, so it's a total of 1.5 million. Is that in the STP? Yes. Okay, can you explain what that is? Probably not as well as you can, but- That's okay, go ahead. The STP is a, is a, it's a program, and I don't remember the, what the acronym stands for, but it's a program that uses federal money. Its oversight is East West Gateway trickled through MoDOT, so federal money to MoDOT to East West Gateway to use for the region's road projects or other type projects that, to meet the guidelines. And is that using or losing money? Yes, it is. So if we don't meet the schedule of June 30th with our dismissal to MoDOT and their approval, we lose those funds. One thing, and I, I don't want to, I want to caution, and we probably need to look at this, Peter, I believe there is some federal stipulations about our contact with property owners prior to approval from MoDOT or right-of-way negotiations. So it may be that our department can't do that. I don't know the exact stipulations, but I know we can't pre-contact them because they're concerned about strong-arming.
I think property owners usually participate in communication about road projects that affect them.
That's right, we just can't negotiate. So I did want to, and I'm not 100% sure, but I believe that's the case.
All right. I want to be clear, though. You said you're seeking it. Does that mean that?
We need council approval to go start acquiring right-of-way, in this case, permanent drainage management and construction license for the construction of these two bridges.
I mean for the federal funds. You said you're seeking the funds.
We, we've gotten approval for the funds. All we have to do is meet the timeline obligations that they set forward and spend the appropriate amount of money so they can reimburse us.
So we're approved to be reimbursed for this project, a certain amount of money if we complete the project?
That's correct. And is it 750,000 per bridge? Per bridge. Okay. So 1.5 million? Correct.
Thank you.
Dan, did I understand your testimony earlier at the committee hearing today that your scheduled deadline is June 30 of 2018?
Correct. For, we have to have right-of-way acquired, final design plans approved, all that done by MoDOT. So they review our right-of-way negotiation process as part of that.
About a year from now.
Correct.
And in the meantime, you're going to check on these bridges weekly?
We are checking on these bridges weekly, indicated in the committee meeting, yes.
So if something happens between now and next June, we may have to close these bridges, is what you're saying?
If we find that they are no longer structurally safe for travel, then yes, we would have to close them.
Okay.
And you guys, you guys may want to know about this as well. With respect to the $750,000 per bridge that was basically awarded through East West Gateway, there's also a process that's followed for that, correct?
Correct.
And East West Gateway goes through all of the various requests that have been made for bridge projects throughout our region, and East West Gateway selected both of these bridge, bridges for the limited federal funds that are available for transportation at the current time. So both of these were selected.
Yeah, to add to what you said, it's a competition with other municipalities, counties in the region, and these two projects were successful in that competition.
And in addition to that, to the extent that we as a county take actions that lose the awards that you're given, that can also affect future awards as well.
You're exactly correct, they, they do hold a memory.
Okay, any other council members want to comment? Questions? Okay, thanks for coming up. So we understand the motion before us is to perfect bill number 130, with the understanding we're going to communicate with affected property owner for Lewis Bridge about participation. And in the event that that communication is unsuccessful, we'll sub out this bill next week with unanimous consent, with the Allen Road project and move it along and keep the Lewis Road Bridge in the pipeline under a separate vehicle. Everybody understands that? Okay, all in favor of motion to perfect bill number 130, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Bill, motion carries, 130 is perfected.
Thank you.
Thanks for working with us. Next item?
Bill number 139, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
Hold on the order of business and that'll be the order.
Bill number 144, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number 144.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, bill number 144 is perfected.
Bill number 145, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill number 145.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, bill number 145 is perfected.
Bill number 146, introduced by Councilmember Page. Mr. Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Okay, we have substitute bills, one which extends the contract for a year, and this gives the Health Department time to rebid this, which was the consensus of our committee hearing. Substitute bill number 1 for, bill number 146. Everyone seen this substitute? So the change is to extend this for one year for an amount not to exceed 600 or $900,000. The proper procedure is to adopt the substitute.
Well, first, the proper procedure would be for me to read the substitute bill if you wish, Mr. Chair.
You should read it, somebody, thank you.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 146, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance amending ordinance number 25,296 is amended by repealing and reenacting Sections 1 and 2 pertaining to a contract to annul with Diamond Drugs Incorporated for pharmacy services for Department of Public Health at the Buzz Westfall Justice Center.
Okay, move to option, substitute bill number 1 for bill number 146.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, substitute bill number 1 is, for 146 is adopted. I move to perfect substitute bill number 1 for bill number 146.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 146 is perfected. Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 146 is perfected.
Bill number 147, introduced by Councilmember Page. Mr. Chair, we have substitute bills?
Please read substitute. Please read. Oh, number 1, I'm sorry, substitute bill number 1.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 147, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance amending ordinance number 25,492 is amended by repealing and reenacting Section 2 thereof pertaining to a contract with Lee Hard Distributors Missouri LLC for general pharmacy services for the Department of Public Health.
Thank you. So we understand that it's too late to consider rebidding this. So we would like to extend this contract for a year. This is what the substitute does, and then give the county Health Department a chance to rebid this contract. So with that, a move for adoption of substitute bill number 1 for bill number 147.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, substitute bill number 1 for bill number 147 is adopted. Move for perfection of substitute bill number 1 for bill number 147.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 147 is perfected.
Bill number 148, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number 148.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 148 is perfected.
Bill number 149, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number 149.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 149 is perfected.
Bill number 150, introduced by Councilmembers Page, Wassinger and Trakus.
Move to perfect bill number 150.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 150 is perfected.
Bill number 151, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move to perfect bill number 151.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 151 is perfected.
Bill number 152, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move to perfect bill number 152.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 152 is perfected.
Bill number 153, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to hold, this bill was pending hearing, and that will be the order.
Bill number 154, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect bill number 154.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, bill number 154 is perfected.
Bill number 155, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill number 155.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, bill number 155 is perfected.
Bill number 156, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect bill number 156, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 156 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 140, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect bill number 140.
Second.
Roll call.
Final passage, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, I'm on perfection calendar. We'll try that again. Move for final passage, bill number 140.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number 140, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 140 is finally passed.
Bill number 141, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number 141.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number 141, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 141 is finally passed.
Bill number 142, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move for final passage of bill number 142.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number 142, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 142 is finally passed.
Bill number 143, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move for final passage of bill number 143.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?